If everybody could rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Adam Auditor.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Bozak.
Out here.
Councilmember Brickner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Present.
And Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Seven to zero.
All right, first reading.
Notice to taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations. Notice is hereby given the taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet in the Porter County Government Administration Building located 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso on April 19th, 2022 at 5:30 PM to consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budgets for the year 2022 and to transact any further business which might come before the council. General Fund, Sheriff, overtime $60,000. Local Roads and Streets, $1169, $450,000. Motor Vehicle Highway, $1176. Vituuminus, $850,000. Aggregate, $150,000. COVID-93.268 Immunization Vaccination Support, Fund 8911, a total of $345,894. COVID-93.323 Epidemiology Lab, Fund 8912, a total of $100,000. And COVID-93.354 Workforce Co-op Act, 8913, a total of $300,000. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have the right to be heard thereon. The appropriation adjustments as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which where applicable will make a written determination as to sufficiency of funds to support the appropriation made. Signed, Duke Your Bank, Auditor of Porter County, published April 7th, 2022 in the Chesterton Tribune. And that concludes first reading.
All right, thank you. All right, who wants to go first? All right, juvenile probation. Trying to mix it up a little bit, see, you know? Lighten the mood. I'm surprised everybody didn't jump up and say, "Good!" All right, juvenile probation, general fund. There's a Form 144 in front of you guys. It looks like a reduction for probation officer from $53,513 to $25.36, $36,879. Need to reduce salary for new hire.
Make the motion approve.
Second.
Motion to second on the floor, discussion.
Yeah. I'd like to ask, that seems to be quite a reduction. Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. The officer that left, she actually left and took a position with federal probation. She was a five-year employee, plus she had a master's degree, which gives them a little bit of a bump. So, in place of that, I hired a brand-new officer.
I understand.
Okay.
Further discussion? We get a roll call on the 144?
Councilmember Bozak.
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis. I'm sorry.
You didn't, really. I missed it!
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Yes. Are you on here anywhere, Vicki? Surveyor. General Fund, Form 144. We got a lot of those tonight, guys. Looks like there's an increase from $15 to $17.50 for survey class one, from $12.50 to $15, survey class two, from $10 to $12.50, survey class three, from $17.50 to $20, crew chief class one and two, from $13.50 to $16, office clerk. Reason, need to increase hourly amounts for part-time workers.
I'll make the motion on the Form 144.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I'd like to ask you, are we doing both of them or just one or two?
I was just doing the ones, all that's on the floor right now.
I kind of want to discuss both.
Yeah, the motion will include the second Form 144 as well.
For the perpetuation fund.
Second floor, too.
Second concurs, discussion on both.
My concern is, how much is in the perpetuation fund for this surveyor?
I did hear you.
I think the question is, will your funds cover?
Well, it'd be for Vicki.
Yes.
So this is the perpetuation fund. $241,673 is the balance.
My question was, is there any way that these raises, you could cover them all on the perpetuation fund?
Well, they're not raises, they're hourly. And most of it is, most of it is covered by the perpetuation because it's the survey tax and any staff we use out in the field. The other people would be clerical, but they're a very small part of the overall budget.
And you say these are summer people?
Pardon?
These are your summer?
Summer, seasonal, or even hourly. But because the general fund has a very small amount in it for the clerical, we run through that pretty quick. And if I'm going to continue having somebody work for us, then I have to jump over to the other budget.
So these are all current hires? I mean, these are people that are workforce? Or these people you're looking to hire?
No, these are seasonal, hourly, that typically we would have. COVID-
Are they on the payroll now?
They're in the budget.
That's not what I, okay.
Currently, we don't have people working these positions.
Okay, so just out of curiosity, if we have nobody working there, what compelled you to ask for more money per hour? When, like, some departments, they have a bunch of openings and nobody is filling them. So, okay, there's a need to try to bump up the money so that we can attract some people because there's other places out there. But you have nobody in mind yet, but yet you bumped up the salaries. That's all I'm asking. Why did you feel the need to do that?
To make it attractive to particular candidates. Also bear in mind, these are ceilings. This isn't what they're going to be offered.
Okay, where's the starting at?
Give me enough room to, pardon?
Where do they start at?
It's all.
Typically, $12, $13 bucks an hour.
For all these?
Fifteen, well, it would vary depending what it is. But it's probably a buck, buck and a half below whatever this advertisement is. Just to make it attractive enough, I could get somebody started. And if they do well, we can move them up in salary and still fit the prescription.
So you might hire somebody at, say, $18 an hour, and then upon your discretion, a month from now, you might get them to $20 an hour? Is that what you're saying?
No, these are the maximums. These are the-
I understand it, but by your words, you had indicated that you can move them up gradually or whatever, which-
Right. Typically, that's six months, a year, it's-
But these are only summertime people?
I hope to have them working through several summers. The idea is to get college interns or younger people that'll work during holidays and during vacations during summertime.
Okay, but nobody's in any of these positions currently?
Correct.
But you hope to have these potentially down the road for a long duration, not just summer?
Yes, that's typically, before COVID, that's how we typically operate.
So COVID screwed this all up?
Well, for me personally, yeah.
Okay, so we had, before COVID, we had people in these positions. COVID happened, and all these positions were wiped out. Now you're trying to re-staff it?
Eventually. No, they weren't wiped out. I just let them attrition occur because I didn't want to bring in part-time people that might infect or affect our full-time staff. Kept everybody healthier, kept the distance, and actually, I had some pretty long-term people. I had one lady that was finally retired, who was really doing a great job for us, but she was there for 25 years.
So, Greg, I mean, I think maybe to help clarify, it's, like you said, college kids come back home, you know, maybe starts as a freshman, he hires them, maybe they'll come back the second summer, the third summer. Maybe he starts them off at $12 an hour, they want to come back. Maybe next summer, he gives them a dollar or two raise. Well, that I get. I just would like to see, where's the start? It says "up to", but where's the offer to where, I mean, I hate to go top of the scale, if we can get somebody, you know, that's willing to work a dollar or two less. I know that, well, because we're trying to be fiscally responsible. And I know, I understand the notion of getting quality as much as possible, but I also don't want to waste money because then we can use it somewhere else, or you can use it for something else down the road.
And this has a "from" and a "to".
What's the "from"?
For which-
Any of them, I mean-
Survey Class One, from $15 up to $17.50.
Okay. Class Two?
From $12.50 up to $15.
Okay. Class Three?
From $10 up to $12.50.
Crew Chief?
From $17.50 up to $20.
Okay, and then Office Clerk?
I think he said most.
From $13.50 up to $16.
So upon your discretion, you're going to try and stay as low as you can within reason, feel it out, and you might need to hire or offer some more to get them to come work?
Historically, that's how I always operate.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we just don't go high first. I'm not opposed to-
I totally agree.
Okay, all right, then I'm good. No questions, all right, if you want. I'll answer. Thank you.
My concern was, is these are going to be part-time people that are going to be seasonal and that. And there seems to be quite a bit of money, sufficient amount of money, maybe in your perpetuation fund. I was just wondering why these all couldn't come from, be paid from the perpetuation fund.
Typically, it's people that are doing things specifically related to the surveying and the section corner perpetuation program. The only people out of the general fund, I think I currently have $10,000, and that's out of a history of giving up full-time positions. We kind of went through that attrition, that that's all we have really left.
Any further discussion? I think it's time to carry on this year that, Greg, we're going to see what's going on in this building right now, what's going on around. We've entered a very competitive market for employees, so we're going to have to keep that in mind as we move forward. So, any further discussion? We get a roll call on all the 144s from the general fund and the perpetuation fund?
Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozak.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
Voice Township Assessor, general fund. Have a good night. I like saying that. Everyone says hi to you. Hello. Up there, everyone said hi to me.
Hello.
I have to warn everybody, a number of these councilmembers were eating and taking a lot of sugar prior to readings. Because it's Andy Bozak's birthday today, so somebody brought him cookies. Good luck. Wish everybody the best of luck.
We only turned 29 once.
Transfer $385.20 from contractual services to office equipment, over $100. Reason transfer needed to pay for assembling six office chairs. Transfer $305 contractual services to training and education. Reason transfer needed for payment of the International Association of Assessing Officers Designation Exam and Designation Course.
Make the motion.
Second. Motion to second on both transfers. Discussion. All in favor of the two transfers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or blow the same sign. That was easy.
Thank you.
Board of Elections and Registration. This one's never easy. Just setting the table for you, Mrs. Bailey. Board of Elections and Registration, general funds, couple transfers, 144. Transfer $20,000 from absentee board to advertising, $20,000 from ballot encoding to advertising. Reason to assist in paying for advertising to vote centers. Transfer $80,000 from polling place boards to postage. Reason to pay for mailing acknowledgements for vote centers. Form 144 from $25 to $30. Security from $0 to $165 per diem. Judge line monitor from $0 to $20, office staff. The reason, need to increase hourly amount for security and add amounts for judge line monitor and office staff. Couple transfers and a 144 in front of you.
I do have a change for the 144.
Say it again.
I had a change for the 144. We're having a difficult time finding poll workers, and so instead of creating a new position and paying them $165, we decided that it would be a better option to adjust the duties for the returning judge and pay them an additional $15 instead of creating a new position.
So this judge line monitor is gone?
Correct.
Did you say $15 or $50?
$15.
$15?
Yeah, that's all this person would have made was an additional $15. It was just creating an entirely new position. So instead, we're going to give the important duties from that person to the returning judge.
So explain the judge line monitor.
We've been working with GIS to be able to advertise the wait times at all of the vote centers.
What?
So they'll be able to show, when they're looking for where they want to go, they'll be able to see the wait time. And so what we need for that is someone to upload that time. So we're going to add that duty to the line judge, or I'm sorry, to the returning judge. And then you'll be able to see the wait time at each of the vote centers, and that might help decide where people want to go.
Where is this? Is it like on an app? How do we know?
It'll be linked to the county website. So just when they're going to the website that's already, the page that's already designed for the vote centers with the addresses and everything, it'll also have the wait time at each one.
Just like those hospital billboards, you know, emergency room-
Hopefully, they'll be accurate.
That's pretty darn cool. Did you guys think of that, or did someone else do it?
Yeah, we, there's a whole elections portal that's available to us through the GIS department. And so we've been working with CHOC to implement some of these things slowly, and this is one that we're, we've been working on, and so we're ready to roll it out for the primary.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, that sounds like a great feature. On the Form 144, help me understand, because I'm still confused a bit. So the $25 to up to 30 is still-
Yes.
From $0 to $165 per diem is no longer?
Correct.
So that-
Instead to add another $15 to the returning judge, which I believe would put them at $180 for the returning judge?
Would that just be judges?
Just the returning judge.
But does it say, it doesn't say returning judge, does it? It just says judges. You can look at this if you want.
Judges with travel is what they're called on here. It's $165. So that would be-
So that would go to $180? Jessica, is this for, this is not for now, this is for May 3rd?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for actual election day.
We already know now, you're short, did you have like a, because when you mentioned you're short poll workers already?
It's two weeks until election day, and we don't have all of our poll workers. And classes started on Monday, so.
Any high school kids? Have you seen a surgeon at?
No, not really. So we're still reaching out to different government classes, and a lot of the school systems have e-learning days, so that's helpful. But it's still always difficult.
Okay.
Do the party chairman share in that responsibility as well?
Yes. Their deadline just passed on the 12th, so now the county can start filling the positions. Before then, we have to wait until the 12th, and as soon as that day's over, then we can contact people.
Just for clarity, can you repeat what they get paid?
So clerks get $150, and the judges get $150. If they travel, now they'll get $180. Inspectors get $190. And then in addition to that, there's $50 for, for class for the first one, and then $20 for meals.
And on the Form 144, it's $0 to $20 on the office staff?
Yeah, so when we were going through and hiring part-time people, we don't have a classification for office staff. We have them. We have people that are getting paid out of the hourly budget. We just don't have it listed on the 144. So when I was working with the auditor's office, it was suggested that we-
So up to $20 per hour?
And I will say, you got one heck of a ad campaign going. I'm seeing the voting center stuff all over the place, so it's really neat.
Thank you.
I'd be shocked if there's a lot of people that still have no idea that they can go anywhere, you know. So that's, it's nice to-
We've tried to reach out as much as-
Prepare to be shocked.
Right?
Well, yeah.
We still get calls every day, but taxes are certainly up.
So Jessica, as you look at the $40,000 that you're putting into advertising for that effort, can you roughly, like, how much is going to billboards, for instance? How much is going to?
Are competing with-
The most of it, the majority of it was mailings. Those were quite costly. We did lower it. Unfortunately, the commissioner's machine broke because we used it a lot. So we tried to keep as much of this in-house as we did. So we, the six of us stuffed all the envelopes ourselves, which was quite time-consuming. We printed it all and shut down the IT's print shop for a little while for envelopes and for the actual letters. But then we ended up having to go with a mailing company because we broke the commissioner's machine. But that ended up saving us a lot of money.
By breaking their machine?
Well, not breaking the machine entirely, but the company that the commissioners were using was charging us 46 cents per letter, and we ended up being charged 20-something cents per letter.
Oh, wow.
So we drastically cut that almost in half.
Is that worth the $80,000 to postage?
Yeah, and it won't be all that. We'll transfer some of it back. We just needed a dollar amount so that, because we had no idea what this was gonna, where we were going to end up having to go in order to get these mailed. So we'll transfer some of that back after we get the final billings in. But yes, we've, that's where the majority of the postage went. So roughly about 40 or so thousand went for that. And then we have billboards, that was about 1,800. We have Indiana 105 that's going to be going on. I think we approved the scripts today. They're pretty funny. And so that's about another 1,500. We have two movie theaters, both Portage and Balpo. So that's, again, about another 3,000. We did the Chesterton Tribune, The Times, both digital and print for both of them. So that was another 4,000-ish.
And do any of those view that as a public service announcement of some sort?
Um, yeah, some of it is.
Chesterton Tribune better.
No.
Jesus, here's what I gave out.
You gotta pay their salary somehow. Yeah, so Indiana 105 is doing news stories on it, as well as the paid advertising. And then there's been some other blips put in newspapers and things like that where-
Some radio shows I've heard of them, absolutely.
Some radio shows have put it on their Facebook and everything. All the chambers jumped at it, and they put it in all of their broadcasts, the recycling waste reduction, Westchester Public Library, Porter County Public Library, what else?
Apple Parks.
Expo, Memorial Opera House, elections. It was submitted to the life sites. So I mean, we reached out to a lot of free advertising in addition to what we paid for.
Thank you.
Let's hope it works for the good.
It will.
There a motion, second? I don't know if there was one on the floor, was there?
I make a motion to pass.
Second it? It's motion to second on all the transfers and the corrected 144. Further discussion? We get a roll call, since there's a 144 in there. I have a lot of there, and you've got the changes?
Yes. Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozak.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
So these transfers, yeah, not that easy. These transfers, I mean, what are we, I mean, we're talking a couple $20,000 transfers, $80,000 transfers. What are we going to be looking like into the fall, at the end of the year?
We will know more when we know how many ballots go out with the primary. We ordered 100% of ballots, so for, for the primary, we are confident we are not going to use them. So we'll be able to use those for the general as well. So that's the good thing about the new ballots that we have.
I mean, at this point, you feel comfortable that you'll have enough for the general? Otherwise, you wouldn't transfer it, right?
As far as ballots and coding, yes. Absentee boards, this is the first time we've had seven locations, so we did cut down on some of the boards, partially because we couldn't fill them, and partially because the turnout just isn't there. So we, that's why we've been having them do some additional duties. But if the general is busy and we have to add additional boards, then we may not be as set as possible. So it all depends on voter turnout. We don't want long lines, which is partially why we extended to seven different locations. But with that comes-
Did you say we're not having a good early voter turnout, or?
No, it's pretty low.
Wow. What are those numbers, just approximately?
Around 1,500.
Total?
With all those locations, wow.
So, well, I appreciate you doing transfers, trying to work within your budget early in the year. You talked to the commissioners about the difference in that?
No, I'm not sure why. I did speak with their vendor, and their vendor prefers to send out mail. I learned there's a whole lot of different ways you can turn out, send out mail, and they sent it out at a higher cost of postage. When we went with the other company, they forwarded me their correspondence with the postal service. It said we did not have to send it out at the higher rate of postage. And so with that confirmation, we felt comfortable going with the lower postage rate.
Stay with that. Yeah, shoot.
Tell the commissioners to switch. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thanks, Jess. Development Stormwater Management Plan Commission, Form 144, it's like a reduction, $41,882 to $34,500 billion administrator. Need to reduce salary for billion administrator. Hello?
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Drew the short straw, huh?
Did.
This isn't Bob.
This isn't Bob.
I'm Andy. Who is this? Nice to meet you.
There's a-
Oh, thank you.
I'll make the motion on the Form 144.
Motion to second, discussion.
Just want to explain, is this just someone left and someone's hired at the new lower rate?
She was originally part-time, and we put her full-time because we're going to be expecting a lot of building permits, hopefully. And we're just trying to keep it fair with the other, at the equal position.
So it's a part-timer that's becoming full-time?
No, no, no. It's already full-time. It was a part-time position. She became full-time, just recently, actually.
And so she's full-time at that new proposed rate?
Correct, yes. We were under the impression that it was an up-to amount. So when we budgeted that amount, we thought that it was up to. And when we were ready to put her at full-time, we wanted to put her at a lower rate to be fair with the other employees that are at an equal position as her secretarial.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Can I just say something? You may recall in the salary ordinance, the Bob Pappard provision that allows departments to hire lower than the salary ordinance, as long as they come back to you for the approval.
Thanks, Vicki.
I like that position, it works well.
Eric, you got some big shoes to fill. There's provisions after Bob now. We got the Pappard report in front of you, Eric. We got a Pappard provision.
Yeah.
We get a, we get a roll call, we get a roll call on that one, Form 144.
Yes. Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozak?
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
It's nice to meet you, Beth. Have a good night.
Porter County Sheriff, Sheriff General Fund, an additional $60,000 overtime, reason to cover the cost of overtime spent for special services. There's also a transfer, $10,000 from salaries to overtime to cover the cost of shift coverage. Special services depleted the funds. There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
There's a second. Discussion.
What special services, or can you not tell me?
There are special services for the different PEA and-
Okay. Thank you. So I need to-
We can't tell you everything we do.
That's what I asked!
This is a, this is different. I know we created that grant fund to reimburse-
So we're working with the auditors on how to actually do that now, because that grant content is so negative. And so we get reimbursed for this after we pay out salaries. So what we're going to do, like, I believe, would come to our conclusion, Vicki will probably explain it further.
So we're going to wait for the reimbursement to put into the new fund, and the fund number escapes me right now, and then they will use that new fund to pay the overtime of special services. services. So, which brings me to the next question, since this is an additional to the general fund, once we start paying, once the new fund gets active, would you be reducing the appropriation in the general fund later on?
Yeah, we could because the money will go back into it.
Okay.
Right? Absolutely.
Good.
So some of this is being paid from a grant fund that is, can't go negative?
It's, it's not an actual grant fund.
Right. Okay, yeah, it's a local control fund. You may recall that last year at, was it budget hearing or near budget hearing time, the sheriff always comes here to get an additional appropriation for the federal reimbursements that's placed in the general fund. And then they use that money to pay out more overtime. And so, um, we cleared it with State Board of Accounts that we could create the local control fund to deposit these reimbursements in, so that he doesn't have, they don't have to keep coming back for overtime in the general fund. But we need that fund to build up before we can start paying overtime out of it, because then we'll always run behind, especially near the end of the year, and we can't let a local control fund go negative.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Get a roll call on the additional and the transfer.
Uh, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rebus?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Alright. Police pension proposed plan amendments, twenty twenty-three cost estimate. The additional cost for twenty twenty-three is estimated between a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. I just, I'll stop there.
Well, first of all, I'm gonna, I'd like to say a few things, 'cause I know you have a lot of questions, and, um, and I think you're seeing this in all the departments, but you, it's magnified with law enforcement as far as, um, attracting candidates, um, and keeping them. Uh, I've, you know, I've been around since the early seventies, and I've never seen anything like it. We're still getting good candidates, but the, but with the amount of candidates that we're getting is like, from one fifty to maybe fifteen to twenty. Um, and then we have, then we go through, you know, strenuous backgrounds and, you know, to weed them out, which we do. Um, so the whole thing is, we've been working with, and I'm gonna introduce Chris Diltz in a second, and, and he can explain, answer most of your questions and concerns, and I know you do have some. But we, but the pension board, which we expanded about a year ago, is about almost a third of our police department. So the pension is something that we've been working on and trying to make it stronger and more attractive and better for the, not only the, the, the future candidates, but the officers that we have. Um, and so we, and you mentioned it with other departments, how competitive things are. So you can imagine how, what competition we're in. You know, we've created our own problems with our jail, 'cause we hire such good people in our jail. Everybody takes from our jail, so it's very competitive. So we have to fight to try to keep our own guys in, in, in our family. Um, so I, I just hope you, and I know this is a, a big, uh, a big thing for you guys to approve, um, but you need to understand how important this is for our, our whole department, and how, how we are, would be set apart, um, from some of the competition that we have. Just a little bit of background. We've checked the, the three departments that we always, that, everybody always compares us with because of size, is Vanderburg, which is Evansville, Tepicano, which is Lafayette, and Hendrix, which is outside of Indianapolis. They're about the same size of us. Um, the demographic's a little bit changed, difference, but, but basically, we, if you would see us, we kinda mirror ourselves with all of us. All three of those departments I mentioned have this. So, not that we're in direct competition with them, but it just shows you that we're, it's nothing that we're shooting from our hip and we're trying to go out of the box here. This is something that they found years ago that will, because they're, they're in the same position. They're very, they're competitive with a lot of, uh, Hendrix with all the donuts, uh, towns in, around Hamilton County and Indianapolis, and, and us the same way. So, um, I wanna introduce, um, Chris Diltz. He's our financial advisor, and he, him and, originally started with his dad with, um, in, in their later nineties, um, but he's stayed with us and with our pension. Um, his dad started it, and his, and Chris has been right there ever since. And they took our pension, which was in dire straits in nineteen ninety-nine, um, and now we're, we're, it's a viable pension. Um, and I, and our guys, and it's a credit to our department on how, how important they think this is, because they all wanna be on the pension board, you know, because they, they know that, you know, they're, they're starting to see the, how important it is. Um, so without, this is Chris Diltz, and if you have any questions, if you want to say something right now, that'd be good.
Um, I would just add that, um, the pension is doing very well. I give a couple quick facts. The contribution is calculated by the actuary annually, and so the contribution for twenty twenty-one to the pension was a million two hundred ninety-three thousand. In the county, you don't find many, um, bills that go down. The contribution for this year is a million two forty-two. Fifty thousand is a lot, but it says, you know, salaries went up, everything else went up. The pension contribution is based on those. What kept it from going up is that the funds are doing very well, and we've removed almost all the expenses. We don't even ask for too many cost studies, 'cause the actuary charges for those. So we can do a lot of the work. I would also point out that in two thousand and eighteen, at the end of the year, the pension balance was under fifteen million. At the end of this past year, it was twenty-three point two million. The actuary looks at that very positively, too, but they still base contributions on the next thirty years. So even if there were a bad change, it doesn't get charged to the county the following year. They break it down and say, here's what it is over thirty years. So we've managed the plan well. The last number I would give is simply that it's done as a percentage of payroll, is how it's calculated. And the calculation in two thousand and sixteen was thirty-two point two percent. This year, it's twenty-eight point seven. So I'm sure you're familiar with reducing something by, you know, ten percent is the percentage of contributions is substantial. I won't say we'll hold it under thirty percent forever, but that's just, that's incredible progress in the past five, six years. So everything about the pension has been running smooth. We just felt the timing was right to be able to say, here's some minor changes we'd like to make. There are changes we'd love to make, COLA, healthcare, there's a lot of, those are, we, that's not even possible to ask for, we know that. So these are ideas we came up with last week. We've actually, have not brought anything to the county council for five years. We've been studying these, saying, what if we did this? What if we, what combination doesn't cost much and would give the most bang for the buck, would help us with our problem hiring officers? With that, if you'd like to walk through, I'd answer specific questions.
First of all, I appreciate, uh, I read the proposal, and I appreciate the work put into this, and, uh, I was just wondering, could you kinda give a, a, a brief version of how the pension is set up, just to kinda clarify, how it's set up currently, and then what the specific changes are you're proposing to the pension, just kinda get, you know, to be able to state that.
Sure.
We all understand, and we're on the same page.
The general, as of right now, for you to be eligible for a pension, there's a set of rules. With police plans, the state statutes, if this is what they are, you have to live within them. So the state statutes for all, uh, police plans in the state, whether that's county, state, um, municipal, all of them fall within these statutes. They say that twenty years is the minimum, and the formula for the first twenty years is one amount, and then they state that the maximum pension is thirty-two years. They don't want police officers sticking around. Your perf pension continues, there is no end on it. So if an employee works another year, their pension percentage goes up. They earned another year's service. For police officers hired, let's say between twenty-two and twenty-four, their pension's done going up between, you know, fifty-six and fifty-eight. So that's the main change we're looking at, is right now it says that you must have twenty years of service and be age fifty. We're simply saying, could we change that to twenty years of service? It's always been in there. It's the statute. We just have twenty and fifty. So that doesn't, their benefits don't go more, that's, they would have a lower benefit. They stay longer, they get more. But when you begin trying to understand police departments, what are you gonna, what, what's a police officer gonna do for another job when you leave, when your pension won't go any higher, and you're fifty-five years old? What, what's your next job? What do you do till you're sixty-two and can get so, till you're sixty-five and can get out of Medicare? You can't, you know, the county plan, you have to pay for the health insurance. You've earned the right to stay on it. So they can't leave, they can't go. We think where the world is heading with police is if they can leave before they're fifty. If they can find another job when they're forty-eight, fifty-two, that's where they're going. We can't pay them any longer. The, the pension quit's going up. They all know they run up against this in their mid-fifties. So that's the concept there. The other smaller piece to it is five-year average. So when you calculate, so the perf plan is five-year average, this plan is five-year average. We're simply saying if we could move it to a three-year average, then if you got a raise or you got promoted, your pension is based on your three years, not whole five years, so it bumps it up a little bit.
Your three best years.
Your three best, your three highest years. Right now, it's five highest years. The other three are details, and let me just look at a list again so I can have them. Oh, the other thing I would point out is, in what you read, what's, um, in the agenda, the, um, way that the pension is calculated and actuarial valuation is done following each year, so in the spring. That calculation is the number that will be submitted in the, funding in your process for next year's budget. So if we did make the changes this year, they would be enacted into the plan effective next year. It will not affect twenty-twenty-three's. You already have those. They've already been delivered. So it does not change next year. It's a whole nother year after that. It would be in the twenty twenty-four valuation done following the end of twenty twenty-three. Does that make sense? So.
So with that.
It, it's a whole nother year later before it can, next year's pension's already calculated and done, and it's about the same amount as it was last year. It'll be back up to a million two ninety, not two ninety-two, but a little above the million two forty-two.
So with that said, are you saying, here it's showing additional cost for twenty twenty-three?
It'd be twenty twenty-four.
So the twenty twenty-three is not correct?
It's not correct.
And then that would be, uh, estimated to be a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand?
Yeah, and there's so many other. There's so many factors that go in. You don't have to count, did anybody leave? They assume they would retire at the, if somebody stays longer, if salaries aren't raised four percent, that's less than what's assumed. If you've ever looked at actuarial, uh, it's, these hundred things are all built in. Here's what every officer, here's one they would leave. Here's what the plan would cost. Then they back it down, you know, that's carried out thirty years. Back it down to see, alright, you're funding at this level, here's the funding that we'd need for the next thirty years to break even. That's how they do all that, and then how well we did on the investments. So they, we requested the numbers last year based on the valuation coming out this year. So we had it then, that's why we say it's about that number. We think it'll be better. And some of it comes from the sheriff's budget, some of it comes from service of papers. So the number we're giving you, the one point two million, is the total. In addition to that, the officers contribute, papers count towards, so, there's a hundred things going in the budget that are, the county doesn't pay anywhere near that much.
So the actual impact is one point two million? Not to the county, but in general, that's.
That's, no, that's.
Where does that number come from?
That's the annual pension contribution.
Okay, that's the total. This is really confusing.
So, uh, just so I understand it, so hypothetically, you have a officer starts up at twenty-five years old, and as it stands now, they're vested at forty-five.
Forty-five was only early, so let's leave that one out. It's fifty.
No, I'm not here to, follow me. So you hire them at twenty-five, in twenty years, they're forty-five.
If we have the twenty and out, yes.
Gotcha. Uh, I'm saying that's where we are today.
Yes.
Um, and as, uh, but they're vested at forty-five, but wouldn't receive it until they're fifty, currently.
Right.
Currently.
Right.
Currently.
So you're proposing.
They wouldn't even be, so the vesting schedule is shorter than that, but at twenty years, they would have twenty times the annual, you know, it's, if they worked twenty-one years, it still goes up.
Right. But, so they, uh, they would have to wait till fifty to get, to start receiving their pension.
Yes.
And in the new, uh, the new recommendation would mean at forty-five, they could leave.
They could leave.
Start receiving their pension.
And start receiving.
So it's basically giving them five years of pension, five additional years of pension in that example.
But it's reduced, 'cause they only had twenty years at the time. You work five more years, you get ten percent more, right? It's two percent a year versus perf, which is one point one percent. Uh, details, but.
Well, the thought would be that, uh.
But your main point is right. It's just, I'm letting you know, the officer that worked to fifty would still have a bigger pension than the officer that left at forty-five.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
So my question is, you guys compared it to other, um, sheriff offices. What's, I mean, our competition, a lot of it's Valpo, Chesterton, Portage, right? Isn't that where you lose officers? Where are they at? What are they doing?
We lose them to state police, Michigan City, different counties.
Okay, but what is Chesterton, Portage, and Valpo?
So all of, all of their plans are, um, what's called the seventy-seven plan for all municipal officers. So they're all in the state plan. It's the big one, bigger than a county plan. The state plan is fifty. This would give us an advantage that somebody could.
Okay, so it makes us more attractive.
It, it just has that, and it's the only things we can afford to put in, that say, even these benefits, you see, we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand annual contribution that we had hoped to offset over time. But these are the minor things we can put in that actually give it an advantage. So let me go briefly into the other pieces. A couple of them are just, um, language. So you, you see a list there. I just have to look back here quickly. So there's a plan language to clarify vesting years of service if an officer is rehired. We never had one rehired. We rehired one, and McCready and Keane, the actuary, said, there is no language in your plan for a rehire. So we're just, it doesn't cost anything. It's, they just, they said, you can't, you can't rehire. They can't have anything with the, you have to have language for that. And it would be proper language. It would say, yes, if you put your contributions back in, you can have back the service that you had. It would count, but you still have to be age fifty and twenty years of service for it to qualify. If you don't get that far, you don't get anything. You can take your contributions back again. So it was a real straightforward that, that we didn't know until the actuary said, you better update your plan. I would remind the county council briefly that this plan cannot be changed without approval of the sheriff, the mayor board, and the county council. One party can't do it, the other party can't do it. We have to all be in agreement to make any changes.
To the current pension?
To the pension.
Right.
To how it's written today.
Is the county council's role only the appropriation for that, or is it actually an approval of?
It's actually approval. You have to sign the amendment, the plan amendment. Everything that changes, there'll be a plan amendment for. We're coming first. We didn't ask for the amendments. We asked for the cost studies. We will request, so it's still a process after it's approved. We'd request the amendments, we'd bring them back, and go through them again, just for everybody to make, you know, there's, that way everybody's seen every bit, every, it's. that way everybody's seen every bit, every, it's all there. We'll go through it again. They have to be signed. After they're signed, the plan can say, okay, we can make this effective for next year now. It can't be made effective prior. It has to be after they're signed.
You're not, you're not suggesting we approve anything tonight, are you?
Well, we'd like approval to move forward. So we, we're asking for general approval. If that means that there'll be follow-up before you actually give it full approval, yes. But we're saying, we're not gonna request all this. If you're saying, no, we're not giving it to you. So we would want a level of approval that says, yes, proceed, or you're gonna have to meet with us. We'll talk about each one of these five pieces and we'll decide what we're, for example, one of them is a cost savings. Well, if we're not allowed to add anything to the plan, I don't know how anxious we'd be to cut something out of the plan. So we can negotiate, it's, it's all there. But we thought we did a fair job of putting all five together that we've been planning for a long time, at one time, at good timing.
Let me ask a more general question. Again, I understand the thought behind it and everybody can appreciate the importance of attracting and retaining the right people. That's throughout, throughout the county. And so as we look at this specific component, which of course pension is just a part of total compensation, an important part for sure. As, as you look at it, and I guess the merit board would certainly have an opinion on it, but I'm wondering if, if these particular pension plan, if this particular change, which could cost in the neighborhood of 200,000, up to $200,000, is that a better way to attract and retain versus would the officers prefer to have more salary than to worry about a pension that'll get them something at 20-year mark?
Well, I think they, they would probably, if they were all here, they would say they would want both.
And I would think they would deserve both if in a perfect world, yeah.
They would want the salary, which we haven't had, you know, outside of our stipend. But I think that's a good, I think that's fair. I mean, that's things that I've kind of dealt with too, you know, dealing with all this. If I was in your position, I think that's a good question to ask. And I think you need to just appreciate what we're trying to do too. And then hopefully we can come up with, you know, something that we all agree on that would help our pension, help, help what we're trying to do too. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, the five to three would affect, or the three to, five to three would affect everyone. And it, I don't think it's, you know, 50,000, but it's, that's, that's pretty attractive.
The, the way the numbers are written there, incidentally, the first number for the updating the plan language regarding mortality and interest rate is a minus five. The other two were pluses. You can't tell because they're all in parentheses right now. Somewhere the other parentheses got lost. But that was not a cost, that was a cost savings. Minor detail, you know, $5,000 is, but that's why we put it under the list of actuarially neutral, but actually save 5,000 when they did the study.
Does this apply to active officers? Or is it retroactive for current retirees as well?
Everybody.
Everybody.
It's just, so we all know we're living longer. Mortality tables are changing. They just, anybody that's familiar with required minimum distributions, they just apply the new tables to that. So what the amount you have to take out when you're 72 is less than it was a year ago. Because they said you live longer now, so the percent. Same thing with this plan, except ours hasn't been updated since the 80s. So it's really on a date. So it's just.
I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, Sylvia, go ahead.
Yes.
You know, when you said it hasn't been updated since the 80s, I thought I, I have voted on a couple of things.
We haven't been in front of you for five years.
Okay, but this is mortality and assumptions. And so part of the reason in the 80s, the table only came out every 10, 12 years. It now comes out annually. So going forward, it would be slightly adjusted every year. They're in fact anticipating that, that a year or two from now, due to COVID, it will go the opposite direction for the first time in three decades. People's lives will be a little bit shorter, not longer. So, but it adjusts annually now and the actuary is the one telling us, you, you can't leave this the same. Well, we can't change it unless we come to you.
And I, I appreciate my guess. Where would we all be without, you know, our officers and safety in the county? It'd be terrible, but I'm just not familiar with some of this and I probably would have appreciated more of one-to-one or a group of knowing what all this is about. What is drop language? What is it? Have you already talked about what that is?
So drop.
Drop language?
So the drop language is a deferred retirement option. So an officer can sign up for drop. It takes a minute to explain. If the officer signs up for drop, their pension is locked in at that amount. And then each month that they continue working, that amount of pension is put into a fund. So to simplify it, if my pension is 2,500 a month at the point I elect drop. If I didn't elect drop, it would have gone up a couple more years. I would have had another year's service. I'd had a little higher salary. And I would end up with this amount of pension. I'm gonna lock it in at 2,500. And instead of having a higher pension, my own choice, I'm picking that because when I retire, I will now have a pension and let's say three years, 36 months, a $90,000 lump sum. It's same as everybody, so other plans offer this too. It's been in the plan for a long time. But our drop language, when we wrote it, we're actually correcting it because right now it says, or you could turn your drop back in for the higher monthly amount you would have gotten. But you have to elect it and the day you sign that form, you can't work past five years. You're signing the day you must leave. No ifs, ands, buts, no exceptions.
So you're more or less saying it's either or?
It's either or. And when the actuaries looked back at it, they said, there's a correction you need to make here. Because if they did it the way it's currently written and went back to the monthly instead of taking the lump sum, the majority's still monthly. The lumps, the monthly would be slightly higher than it should have been. They miswrote it. They asked, they said, you should correct that. Well, I don't know, we've had that many drops and I don't know that any of the drops turned around and elected that. But the, right now under the plan, they get a little bit too much and the actuary says we should put that back so it's exactly cost neutral. So officially that'd be kind of a cost savings, but since nobody's done it, it never cost the plan. So that's just, it's just a correction recommended by the actuary.
And I did have a little bit of concern about, and I can appreciate what Sheriff Fros is saying, to change from five years to three years. And you're comparing this with some of the very wealthier counties in the state of Indiana. And I guess we're not doing bad in Porter County. But. In county government, for a county worker, everyone else in county government is 10 years. Your plan is a five.
The county plan is five-year salary average. It's your best five years. County plan is. Perf, teachers, TIOF, perf, everybody's five-year average.
Oh, okay.
And we're the same. Well, that's all right. We're just, that's why we call it an improvement. The officers, well, it's, what else can we do in our plan that doesn't cost much? That would just be an improvement over if they went to where there's a higher salary. And they went here. What can we give them that doesn't cost as much as giving everybody $10,000 raises?
And the last one you're saying, capping overtime.
That's what saves money. So let me explain that one. It's a little complicated, not hugely. But the pension, so for every dollar of salary, that's how the 1.2 million is calculated. Here's the salary. 29% of that equals this number. That's how much you have to put in to the pension to fund the pension benefits for that amount of salary. If salary goes up, it's still 29% it goes up. Now, if somebody works overtime, that's always work because it's been through the department, but now it's all coming from grants. So the grant come in, it's 100% the salary. They don't put any sight for the pension. So now we have officers, and the officers who get it don't want to give it up. But for the betterment of the plan, they're getting benefits that aren't funded. No money went into the pension and they got $10,000 in overtime. Their pension is higher. It's now a percentage of that increased pay. Down the line, when they calculate that, it's gonna cost our pension more and our pension would go up from time to time. Can you picture that? So it's a long, complicated scenario.
Sylvia, what we're talking about mainly is the guys that are working in special, special services. They're getting paid by the government a considerable amount of money overtime. They're not putting that money towards the pension.
No contribution went in.
So that's what it affects. The average guy in our department doesn't make over $5,000 in overtime. So that's why we kept, we kept, so we basically, we're not penalizing those guys. They're still making it, but they're not putting it into pension anyways.
So we're not gonna let them have pension benefits on top of it that we haven't funded that will cost our plan eventually?
I'm sorry, but I just didn't have a, I know you came before us, but I had a lot of questions that, you know.
They're good, great questions, Sylvia. They are. Mike, did you have?
Hypothetically, under the current system, an officer retires at their best five years.
Yes.
What's an, what's a, what's a pension of a, like, somebody who retires as a patrol deputy?
So police officers. Let's do the math. So for all public safety officers in Indiana, the formula is the same. At 20 years of service, it's 50% of your salary. So let's say they retired at 25 years of service. Then it's 2% a year for each year after, it'd be 60%. If that officer was making 60,000 a year, that's 3,000 a month. If they got 50% of it, it would be 30,000.
So it's okay.
If they got 60%, it's 36,000.
So under the new plan, you said they would make less money? Did, or, but they would collect earlier?
They would only collect earlier. If they left at 20 years, they're still at, it's 30,000 a year. They didn't get more, they just could have it sooner. But had they worked longer, they would have been at 36,000. We're just saying, go find another job now before you're 57 years old and run out of our pension. And then you're stuck and can't leave for health insurance and can't get any more in your pension. Let's, and we think that's gonna be attractive enough to have more officers come to our department than someplace they'd have to work a little longer. We're pretty sure, well, it'll help. If there's only 15, you know, officers. So when the department hires an officer, they don't come to work. They have to train. They have to send them off to training, to the police academy. I mean, they're, they don't get to be on duty for how long? Just six months to a year. And then if they leave, we just shot all that money. We spent all that time training, didn't have an officer on the streets. And then they're gone, we hire another one. In the last five years, the department has hired 21 officers. When your department is 63, 64, 65, that's a third of the department. That's, that's what we're dealing with right now.
What's the average age of our officers?
Our department?
I have an actuarial study. They actually do that in there. Give you just a moment.
You guys, my, my thought is, you know, I think you, maybe we pass this on tonight and it's gotta come back in front of us for approval of the amendment. Pass this on tonight, let them continue down the path. Maybe a couple of us work with the sheriff and, and see, you know, dig in a little bit more. It's not a final approval by any means, but I think, as you guys see, we're in a very competitive market. I'm sitting here thinking, I know one department where, when they retire, they pay for their health insurance for them and their spouse till they hit, you know, Medicare age. I mean, there's, there's a lot of other perf's out there. I mean, it's, there's some rich benefits out there, you guys. Do we want the best and brightest? Not just here in all the departments. We're, we've lost, we've lost a few department heads recently and we're in a very competitive market. Like you know that. I think this is the only department we're gonna be looking at here, so.
My concern is it's saying that it's going to cost the county, if I'm not wrong, 150 to up to 200,000 a year. You correct? And we're being told to, you know, there's caution in the wind. Let's put it that way, by the state and others that maybe the county is not going to be receiving as much money as they have in the past. It's just in the wind. That, that's my concern. Certainly I want the best for the officers that could protect us daily. And I have, I've used their services and it's wonderful.
Two brief answers, if I may. Average age, 37.9.
As long as it wasn't 45.
I'm sorry.
So 37.9, that's good.
37.9, average years of service, 10.9. And to your point on the 200,000, yes, that's the number. But I'm pointing out that we've actually held the contribution steady for consecutive years. Had it still been 32%, we'd be 100, $150,000 higher right now. We're not trying to say we've saved every penny of it. We're saying we've held it down for a long time. We know we've done our work to help pay for the amount we're asking for. So just a thought process.
Mr. President, my concern is we are doing a pay study right now that will be done July 31st, 2022, according to this. And it's not just a pay study, it's a compensation study. So I assume that they have asked you guys for details on the retirement plan?
I think they finally did. No, I don't think they've.
They have not, have they?
So I think that, I personally, I personally feel that they haven't and we need to get with them to make sure that they do. And we should, that should be part of what we're looking at in come July. You know, because I, I think you got some good points. I don't disagree with you, but we're paying a lot of money and we held the line for a long time, for months now, on this, waiting on this pay study. I think we should wait and see what it comes back with. But I also think we need to make sure that they're studying it.
Well, I think that would go, you know, hand in hand. If we move this forward, then we're looking at it. It's not a final approval, but we can get involved in what they're doing. Like they said, it's a negotiation. Let's get involved in what they're doing. And this is something that maybe we can finalize around budget session or something. Just my thought is, we're, we're, we're working with them at the same time. We're not.
How did they get left out of not being contacted?
I don't think they're left out.
We were contacted. We've been working with them, but they have asked zero questions about the pension.
It's just pension, it's just a pension. Yeah, so I think we need to follow up with our, with Ms. Young, Rhonda, and ask what's going on and make sure that they're looking at that as well.
I, for what little bit I've heard, and I'm not inside the county, I don't think that cost study is moving along nearly at the pace everybody thought it was.
I think it.
Thank you, that's the only update I've gotten on it, so.
The.
It is.
This, this is clearly a big issue for the county. And appreciating the importance of attracting and retaining the right people, my gut tells me that the emphasis, I think we'd accomplish our goal with more of an emphasis on, on pay and salaries versus the 20 years down the road. I mean, and that's, I'm thinking that might be the mindset of the young people that you're trying to attract. I don't know how focused they are on pension or retirement. That's just my personal experience at it. I think there's some interesting points that should be studied further and talked about further. We talked about the counties. I think it would be interesting to compare that to local municipalities to find out how it does compare in a total compensation, you know, sort of, sort of way. And maybe, you know, I don't know, there's nothing really to move on tonight. I think what might be helpful is if we could get a group of three of us to go in and ask better questions and get more detailed information to better understand what, you know, what you're proposing versus, you know, just a few bullet points, you know, presented tonight. So I mean, I don't think we're in a position to vote on anything necessarily. But I think to study it further would, you know, would be a fair consideration.
Well, but they, they need us to say yes for them to move forward, right? Isn't that what you said early on? So we do have to do something.
Move forward in what way?
We're one of the three that they need approval on. So they need to still go in front of the other two to see where they're at. Because if it's, if it's not three and O, then this doesn't work, correct?
We have the approval of the others. We wouldn't have come forward with that.
Oh, we're the last ones?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
So they're asking for it.
Okay, no, no.
It's been to the officers, it's been reviewed, it's been discussed for a number of years before we finalized and said time to see the county council. We've met with Vicky. I mean, we've gone through all the costs so that she fully understands all of it before we'd even come here. We did our homework.
I think it might, I think it might be helpful if three of us would get together to get more involved or aware of what that homework is. Because up till now, I don't think, I don't think we've seen it.
I, I agree. I, I feel that way. And it is very important, and I understand, you know, why you're here and asking for it.
And this is a change we're proposing for 2023 that won't have any impact into 2024. So I'd assume we would have time for further review.
Good point.
Yeah, I would say you guys keep the conversation going. The door's open. No one here I've heard say no. Personally, I want to hear from the compensation study. I wouldn't mind attending if you guys need a third person to go in. I mean, whatever you guys want to do, but.
I am.
That's just my thought.
Well, I mean, it's, we're involved in this, so, you know, I think they're, what I'm gathering is they're looking for, you know, something to move forward that they, they believe that we're interested in this, so.
I think what Mike said, to have, set up a committee.
Whatever that may be is, yeah, I think a number of us, I'm interested in moving forward with this. It's, guys, it is total, this is part of the total compensation of our officers. Again, I think we've lost a few people recently taking higher-paying jobs elsewhere that we're going to have to consider this all across the board. And yeah, the Wade study is, is part of it. So, you know, I would definitely recommend that, you know, a couple of us, obviously, I think Mr. Brickner should be involved. You know, I'd like to be involved. I set out a pension plan myself, and, you know, anybody else, but we need to.
I'd be more than happy to help.
Move this forward. So, I mean, however, however you guys want to move forward with this, you know.
Do with that.
I mean, if you want to, if somebody else want to, we'll set up the committee. We'll meet in the near future.
Justin and.
Yeah, only three.
Three of us, sit down.
Yeah, do you want to go public meeting?
So with the three of you, we'll start the communication. We'll just figure out when the times are. We'll probably include a few members of the pension committee. I think that would be excellent. And then we can develop it from there. You should see the amount of material we've done for it already. This was to boil it down and not bother you with the amounts that we've already gone through. The presentation we brought you had to have been 100 pages.
Well, I appreciate it. This is, we're going to be handling this for, I think, for a while now. Compensation, pay, being competitive, so. Well, you got them, can you give them, me and Mike, who else was on it?
Justin.
Justin?
Mike.
The Mikes and me. Well, we'll meet here shortly. Start moving this forward.
Sounds great.
So is that all, so you have?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Sheriff.
Health Department. Vaccination Grant Fund. Additional, 144. No, an additional 144,152.63 to hourly. 11,500 to FICA. 58,802.11 to office supply. 17,294.74 to travel. 86,473.69 to contractual services. 27,671.58 to other equipment. Reason, immunization vaccine grant for COVID vaccine supplement to reimburse fund. 1159 for grant COVID, for grant COVID vaccine staff and purchase three new vaccine refrigerators. There's a Form 144, up to 17 dollars per hour intake registration, up to 30 dollars per hour. Vaccinator manager. Reason to create a Form 144 for Fund 8911 to pay salaries of the intake registration and vaccinator manager.
I'll make the motion on the additional and the Form 144.
Second.
The motion and a second on the additional and 144. Any discussion on that? We get a roll call on the additional and the 144.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
And Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious disease grant fund. An additional 85,000 hourly, 1,600 overtime, 5,650 to FICA, 150 to perf, 7,600 other rentals. Reason epidemiology grant for COVID testing. Intepay full-time staff for 123121 testing and reimburse fund 1159 and for storage units for COVID PPE supplies. Form 144, up to 35 dollars per hour nasal swab administrator. Up to 22 dollars per hour nasal swab administrator assistant. Up to 19 dollars per hour intake registration, up to 30 dollars per hour vaccinator manager. Reason, create a Form 144 for Fund 8912 to pay for salaries of nasal swab administrator, nasal swab admin assistant, intake registration, and vaccinator manager.
Make the motion on the additional and the Form 144.
Second.
Second discussion. We get a roll call on the additional and 144.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Workplace Cooperative Agreement for Administrative Response Grant Fund. Additional, 60,000 of salaries. 4,600 to FICA, 6,720 to perf. 2,400 to uniform and clothing. 5,000 to training and education. 11,000 maintenance agreements. 195,280 motor vehicles. 15,000 data processing equipment. Reason, workforce co-op grant for school liaison, mobile clinic. EHR software for nursing, nursing division, laptops, printers to use in mobile clinic and at schools. Form 144, 0 to 10,000. Director of nursing, 0 to 10,000 nursing.
I'll make a motion.
0 to 10,000, six PHNs at 10,000. Equals 60,000. Reason to create a Form 144 for Fund 8911 to pay for salaries of director of nursing, nursing supervisor, six PHNs. Motion, second on the floor, discussion.
The only question I had to explain the 195,000 for motor vehicles, if you will.
For the mobile clinic?
For the mobile clinic, our hope is to purchase a unit, mobile clinic, so we can take out to the outskirts. We found out through COVID that a lot of times people can't come to our clinics here. And so it's also going to be advertisement for the health department to get people back to come to us. And it's going to be fully equipped to be able to vaccinate and pretty much do anything we can in that mobile unit. We have been researching the cost. We're trying to keep the cost down as much as possible. We have found some that are pretty reasonable in cost. We just have to equip it with, like, the refrigeration and things like that that will hold the vaccine so that we can take it out.
That's a great, great idea. Just trying to, I was curious about how far you've gone down the path of investigating or finding what the unit that you're looking for and.
We have done a lot of research on that, and I can provide you with information on that.
How big a?
It's not going to be huge. It's going to be, I forgot what's the feet, as far as footage?
It was pretty small.
Was it 40 or 60?
No, I think it was smaller than that.
Jeez.
Because it's something we want to keep where we don't need to get a special license to drive it. So I think it was more like, I thought it was more than 24 or something.
That makes more sense.
About 24, 25 feet. So it's not going to be huge. It's going to be something comparable to, is it the voters, voters unit that?
Voter bus?
Yeah.
And as you look, is that, in terms of the size, are you using the guideline of whether or not it requires a CDL or what?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if the size is.
That's going to be the main consideration.
The size that you ultimately want and really need versus getting something too small or too large or.
Exactly. And we're looking into that, make sure that it doesn't require a CDL and that as far as, we're going to store it as well, things like that. We've been talking to all the health departments because we're finding out that's what they have, that's what they're using. And so, like I said, it's, our focus is to make sure that we reach out to all the citizens of our communities. Yeah, your valuable portage, our clinics are here. But when you go out to cows and other outskirts areas.
So it would be set up like a town or.
We can take it out and set it up and then advertise for it that the health department is there to, whether it's vaccinate for COVID or vaccinate for the flu or anything else.
Or even back-to-school vaccines.
Right.
Physicals and stuff like that?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Who ultimately signs, would be the purchase order for it? Or whose, is there a contract to be signed? Does the commissioner sign something? Does the Board of Health sign something?
It has to go before the Board of Health, of course. We have to propose to them, you know, once we get all the data, it's going to go before them so they can approve it before it starts moving all the way up.
So they haven't, nothing has been approved yet?
They've approved us getting one, but we haven't come to them with the final decision on what we need yet because we're still trying to decide what's going to be the best option for us.
They like the idea, but like you said, is that we need to.
Is this a hard figure we have here? It's 195,280?
No, it was, it was just an estimate.
It's just a estimate?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's a great idea, and maybe from my edification, the rest of the council, when you, if you have a picture or some details or specs on it, it'd be certainly interesting to take a look at, see what you guys are considering.
Need more discussion? We get a roll call on the, yes, roll call on the additional 144.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Liddy, this is your last meeting in front of us, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
No. She's retiring.
Yes, I am retiring.
Ain't quit. I resigned. Retiring. Perfectly clear.
And it wasn't because of salary.
No, it had nothing to do with. How much you offer me, I won't stay.
No, we appreciate your service and everything you've done and, yeah.
Thank you.
It's been fun.
Hasn't really. You went out with the day in your COVID.
He really has. I'm just, I like torture. I don't know what it is.
Thank you for getting us through COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Liddy.
Thank you.
Highway. Local roads and street fund, additional 450,000 by two minutes. Reason, funds for crack ceiling. There's a transfer, 20,000 from motor vehicles to equipment. Reason, replacement of worn-out roadside mower on one of our tractors.
Move to through.
Second.
Motion, a second on the local roads and street fund, additional and the transfer. Discussion. We get a roll call on the additional and transfer.
Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozick?
Yep.
Seven to zero.
MVH fund, additional 850,000 by two minutes, 150,000 to aggregate. Reason, by two minutes in aggregate for chip and seal program.
Make a motion.
Second. Motion, a couple seconds, discussion. We get a roll call on the additional.
Okay, Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivas?
Yes.
Member Bozick?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brickner?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
How you getting along?
We're living, living the dream.
Yeah.
Congratulations, by the way.
Oh, well, thank you. You know, hopefully, we caught up on some potholes. We got the bill yesterday, would spend $35,000 on cold patch last month.
A tough, tough winter.
It was a tough, tough spring, yeah. Too many thaws and freezes. You know, if it would have just froze and thawed, we'd been all right. But there was a couple extra freezes mixed in there, so.
Well, hopefully those are gone. Hopefully those are gone.
Hopefully.
No more freezes.
Hopefully, yeah, it's 80-some degrees on Saturday. Fish and weather.
We had snow last Sunday.
We had, we had snow the other morning, so. All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Jim.
Good night.
IT general fund transfer, 10,000 from data processing equipment to consultant. Reason, additional funds needed to pay consultants for ongoing projects.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a second on the transfer, discussion. It's a long wait for that.
I know. Why didn't I go first?
I asked.
They can take your ass for a lot more after hearing everybody's stuff tonight.
No, last time you did that, you got us all. Don't do that again.
So the consulting, is consultants you already have?
It is. It's just the firms we use to answer the questions we can't.
Very good. Thank you.
And then this money will be applied to the actual budget next year. I'll make the difference, so I'm not coming back and asking again.
First question you guys can't answer? That's crazy.
Well, we don't like to show off.
All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you all.